Okay, good evening everyone.
Hello.
Oh Kelly, I'm sorry, I was waiting for you.
Can I blend in with the truth?
No. First, I'd like to introduce Richard, stand up. This is Richard Holliday, our second ward-elect alderman. Okay, Richard, this is our deputy clerk, a city clerk.
Nice to meet you.
Stephanie Durkin, I'm the honorable mayor. Tony Casale, our lawyer. Kelly Quist, the first ward alderwoman. David Muller, who we will be replacing. Our engineer, Mike Clark. And our city controller, Louise Lyran. And our police chief, Jack Hobbins. I'll let you walk everybody. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda. Okay, here we go. Okay, consent, consent resolutions. First one, authorizing, nope. It's not right here. Let's see what happens when I'm getting prepared. Resolution 108 under consent. 107 is the first one, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Resolution 107 under consent, authorizing safety engage in Shepherd Communication and Security for the purchase and installation of security camera. This is very important because now, Mayor, you have money for security cameras in a park, so I'm gonna let you make the honor.
Right, we have, we have been looking at this issue since, led this past summer. And we had three different companies go up there and give us quotes for security cameras. And this quote, though not the lowest, was technology-wise the best. And the way we're funding this at this point is we, Assemblyman Santa Barbara is attempting to get us the money for this, as it's written in the resolution. And we're hoping that that does come through. But rather than wait for that to come through, we are going to move forward with the cameras. Go ahead and put them in, because regardless if we get the money or not, we need the cameras at both Veterans and Shuttleworth. And if they, if for some reason his attempt at getting us this grant from the state is unsuccessful, we will use ARPA funding. We have the money in ARPA. It's a $55,000 investment. And what it will do is it will label us to have more secure environments at both Veterans and Shuttleworth. And I think based upon the events of this past summer, it's a good investment. We've had our APD look at all of the vendors, all of the bids, all of the, all of the technology. And this was their recommendation as well, this company needs cameras. So I feel very confident that once these have been installed, we're, right chief will be in.
Correct. Yes, it's, they are technology. Not only will it capture incidents as it happens, it's a good deterrent, it's watchful. Money lost, man.
Mayor, all of the requests.
Yes.
Just took a moment myself, we put $35,000 in the budget for cameras up in Arnold Park. Right, Kelly, remember?
No.
No, we didn't.
Where we put the $35,000 in?
Not for cameras.
That's what we did.
We put $10,000 in for, like, equipment. I don't think we added 35 for anything, really. That I could think of. We were talking about 35 for the mayor's salary, but that ended.
No, 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 surveillance cameras at Arnold Avenue.
Not for cameras, James.
No?
No, we do have other, we do have other initiatives in place, looking for, we have money in the smarts, in the, for the streetlight program.
Okay.
We are getting $50,000 of smart city money for that.
I just brought up Arnold Avenue, because I swore that was one of the parks that we were talking about.
We just got $10,000 for cameras, right?
From Santa Barbara's office.
From Santa Barbara's office. And in the new, in this new thing that we just put together, there's more money in there for cameras for justice and crime, whatever. So we have a lot of things going.
Okay.
So it looks like this is a base that we can build off of?
It's, for $55,000, what we're gonna get for a year is all of the cameras to cover pretty much every square inch of both parks, as defined by, you know, the people, plus software. The software that we're getting is gonna be an annual fee. It's gonna be about $8,000 a year if we decide after 12 months to renew the software. The software gives us the ability to search the video so that we can pick out a guy who's wearing a red hoodie, for example. If we can, and we can search it for people who are already in the system. We can search it for names, et cetera, that we won't be able to do if we don't have that software. So the nice thing about this is, we're not paying it for, for, for the first year. We'll have the ability to determine if it's worth the money the second year. And we think it's going to be, we think it's gonna be well worth the money.
But we could put cameras in other parks that would add, go into the system, is what you're saying. Is what it seems like.
We can use the same technology in other parks.
Yeah, because they haven't gone through with the whole thing, but that sounds.
Right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Resolution 108. Resolution to de-obligate and balance of unused loan funds. Alderwoman Collins is here, so. David, you want to sponsor this?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, sure. Whereas the city has been approved for a low-interest USDA loan to refinance that portion for the cost of the new truck, of a fire truck, that was clearly she paid. Chief, I'm glad you just came in here. And whereas the loan was approved for 1.466 million, and only 1.45 is really being borrowed. You wanna go on and explain this?
I don't know that you would.
It's probably more of a Louise question. Because where does this money go?
USDA actually was here today, we actually did the loan closing. When we originally applied for this loan, the amount we expected to need was 1.466 million. And that was what we were approved for, but we ended up using $50,000 out of operating funds for the, we call it.
I think pretty upholding of the, the truck, all the extra stuff that needed to go on the truck, out of last year's budget.
This was just like a form, formal requirement for the closing that we, you know, officially de-obligate the funds that we didn't end up needing. So.
Okay.
So did we ever take out a different loan for this, or we only took out the USDA loan?
We originally used band funding back in March. Okay, and then we are actually paying that down at the end of December, the portion that was used for the truck.
Okay.
You know, along with some other funds.
Other things that were in the band, yeah.
Yeah, so this is just replacing the band funding, which was just temporary debt.
And the interest rate differential was what?
3.6, yes, it was a couple points, almost two points different.
But the original was five point?
Five points.
Yeah, so we're looking at like $50,000. Will that $50,000 go towards, and this is just for my curiosity, like, the other things in the band paying that off sooner? Or like, the band is smaller because we're not using that $50,000?
No, that was what we took, that was the actual amount of the, the band as well. So, you know. Or did we actually, or we sent some of it back already, that's right. Because we did pay due, a partial paydown. So we paid down, that's right, because we took one, sorry, I had to think this through.
Sure.
We took 1.8, then we've got 350,000 from, Sam Grant? 50,000 we used from the budget. So this is just the, the net that was remaining that we needed to borrow after we paid down those others, you know, the original borrowing from those other sources.
Right, so does, well, does this just save us money? It'll save us money in the long run, kind of?
Well, it's, it's just a better term.
Oh, yeah.
Loan.
So we never spend that $50,000 and we don't have to pay it back anywhere either? Like, the $50,000 doesn't exist anymore?
Right. We overestimated.
Yeah. But it was, it was never real money that we paid.
Yes, over delivered.
Yeah, okay.
Originally, we thought the whole truck was gonna cause us 1.8. In turn, it caused us 1.4. And then the $16,000 is to pay for the band, the, the time that we bought.
Right, I just was, you know, wondering just from a financial standpoint, where the money goes? Like, say if that was my house and I like, you know, refinanced and like, well, they'd hand me $50,000. Like, that's not the case here. Like, the $50,000 is not just real.
We never actually borrowed 1.466.
Yeah, gotcha, okay.
Next, okay, new business, 102. Approving the minutes of the meeting. Thank you, actually, thank you very much. 103, Resident Transfer Funds Solar Panel Contract Termination. This resolution would basically get rid of the old solar panels on Brookside Avenue, right, at least?
Public safety building.
In public safety building?
But then we needed a roof.
Resolution.
I'm out of order here.
Resolution 103.
Yeah, you have to skip the first two, because they're all business.
Got it.
They're full of business. Approved, it says here, additional costs, okay. Transfer funds, solar panel contract termination. Whereas the resolution number 23 was approved by the common council on August 1st, authorize the cancellation and release from our solar contract, and a cost is saved for $20,000. But there is an additional cost without including the capital project budget. And the control authorized the transfer of money, an extra $20,000.
We, we approved back in August, cancellation of the contract, but there was, you know, that came with the cost. And, but we never identified, you know, where the cost was coming from, that's what we're doing here.
So you're taking the $20,000.
For contingency.
For contingency. Okay. Now, that's up by Brookside, whose ward is that? Is it your ward or David's ward?
This is for the public safety building. It's not.
Oh, the public safety building, that's my ward. Okay, I'll sponsor this. I'll sponsor this resolution. I'm sorry. All right, 104. Transferring funds for the sewer plant diesel, Alderwoman Quist, tomorrow.
We have a slight edit. It's supposed to say equipment, not diesel.
It's equipment.
Right.
Sewer plant diesel.
Will I need to amend that? Carry camera as a title?
Wherever you want.
That can just be changed.
Okay.
This is laboratory equipment, I believe, right?
Louis?
Yeah.
What do you mind doing?
He said we could exchange it.
Okay.
Your resolution changing account numbers and stuff like that, that's where you got to do your minutes.
Okay, sewer plant equipment costs have been higher than anticipated and many items of equipment have been in service since 15, 25 years and need to be replaced or repaired. So we're gonna resolve, authorize the transfer of funds of $15,000 for sewer equipment, replace or repair. That's up to Spencer. Thank you. 105, contract with the Remy Group. City currently engaged in services from two different third-party companies to provide the support for the printers and copiers in City Hall. And in regards to the contract currently in place, a contract with one provider ends May of 2024. And the other contract is subject to cancellation upon the thirty-day notice. Whereas been recommended by the city controller that the city, city engaged with Remy Group in the constellation consolidation services currently provided by two different companies. All right, Irene, Louise, go ahead.
We just, I'm looking at all our different printers and copiers and then, you know, some are covered by one company, some are covered by a maintenance contract with another company, some aren't covered at all. And I'm just attempting to really just kind of streamline this and determine which, you know, which copiers should have a maintenance contract, because I don't think they all need one. So we're just sort of trying to figure this all out right now. But one of the companies that we do business with is atrocious and their billing practices and their service that they provide is, is just unacceptable. So we really just need to get another company in place to replace them.
So you want to, you wanna hire the Remy Group?
They have a New York State contract that's.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, thank you for looking up at us, it's very important.
It's still, it's still working.
And difficult, yeah. And I did hear the fire department need a new copier.
Kelly, you want to sponsor this?
Sure.
Go ahead, 105.
She's not even listening.
105. 106 is the audit, and yours truly did the audit today, it's very well done.
I saw your signature, I was, yeah. I saw you signed it.
Did you? Thank you, Kelly. I was up here with Daniel. You did it together. All right, thank you very much. Okay, so we're going to the whole business. I wasn't here for the last meeting, so I did some reading and did some research. 97, resolution waiving vacant building fees pursuant to the Amsterdam City Code. Okay, Mary, you sponsor this. Pursuant to the Amsterdam City Code, chapter 226, vacant building fees in the amount of $1,500 show up as being due and owed for the premises owned as 256 Gypark Avenue. And the following serves as justification invasive for said fees being waived by the common council. The dwelling is now occupied and fee co-virulation is heard by resolve at the vacant building fees due pursuant to chapter 226 of the Amsterdam City Code fees for the subject premises references. Here and above are hereby waived by the mayor. Okay. Kelly, you had a question on this? You want, you tabled it, right?
Well, I, I can summarize. Irene tabled, thought we should table it because we were going, three of us here and one vote would knock it all out. And.
How many votes?
And now there's three here again, and so.
How many votes you need for this to pass?
Need three.
Need three, okay.
And so she wanted to get some feedback, like, from you and, and I don't know if she thought down the road of that. So we had, we had four, right? We had, we had the two commercial properties on Market Street, which we agreed to. And then these were residential. I think Irene was wanting to vote against it. My.
Let me tell you right, Sam, because I'm brand new, and you two, Irene. I went and I talked to Mrs. Romans. And four years ago, when we passed the vacant building, I, I had reservations and questions then. But I passed it because I want to give it a chance to work. And through the, through the four years, we've had our ups and downs with it. And one of the main things I always thought was not fair is that we have vacant buildings ourselves that are unoccupied. And yet we're going out and telling people that you have to pay a fine. And God knows how long we've had vacant buildings. But we can't fix them because we're either gonna sell them. That's number one. Number two, I talked to, and I spent time with her, Mrs. Romans, and she sent me pictures. Did you see, anybody see the pictures from last week?
Well, I've, I've talked to her as well, yeah, yeah.
She has houses here that she is in the process of fixing up. Now, yes, the law says that she's in violation because it's been two years and nothing's been done. But according to those pictures, there's work that is being done. But that doesn't excuse her from the fact that they're vacant. The way I feel it is this way. That, that is law, and I read where Kelly said it needs to be altered, that changes, need to be done. And I agree with her. But I don't think we should punish, be punishing people if they're working on their houses. I'd like to go after the people who have a vacant house that are doing nothing, rather than going after a person that has vacant property, but they're working on it. And talking to Mrs. Romans, and here's the problem, and she will tell you. Her husband buys houses, he fixes them up, he does it by himself, which takes a long time to do. But if you look at the pictures, he is making an effort. Now, there's a difference between making an effort and doing nothing. And I think we have landlords here that do nothing. So with all that being said, and like I sit here and preach, I'm in favor of waiving the penalties only because she does show promise in fixing up those houses and putting them on tax roads and putting people in there to rent, which will generate taxes to the city of Amsterdam. If they came to me and their house is sitting on Brookside and there's nothing being done, and I look at it this way. It looks beautiful from the outside and there's nobody in there. But how about this one? How about if it looks like hell from the outside, but we got people living there with both code violations? But they're not gonna say anything because, especially in my ward, they don't say anything because they don't want the landlords to raise their rent and they don't want to get in trouble, so they sit in, uh, I don't want to swear, they're sitting in a bad.
Bad condition.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Kelly. They sit in a bad area and, so I'm in favor of waiving the penalty. I'll make it short, okay? That's how I feel.
I just want to remind everyone real quick that, just like last meeting, we have three of you here, one vacant and one absent. So for all motions, all resolutions to carry, there will need to be three yeses. Thank you.
Okay, so you know how I feel?
Yeah.
How you feel, Dave? You're, you're a favorite waiver of bounty? Okay, Kelly, this is you.
Sure, I, I agree with you 100% in this situation. And I've talked, Natalia called me two years ago, right? We were talking, we talked about it two years ago. This has been going on for a while and we thought it was, was settled. The, the concern that I have is that these get brought to the council to vote on and in that way it becomes a political issue and a popularity contest or things like that that can happen. And I'd like to see in the future this not come before us, but have an internal process. And we talked a little bit about that last week, about, you know, the assessor has that day that you can come and complain. Also, Natalia told me about like the form, pretty much just says, does somebody live in there, yes or no? And there's not anything of like, well, no, but here's my plans or here's what I've been doing. So any kind of like progress? So I'd be interested to work with the chief and the codes and, and building and see what we can do to make the process better. And then, and leave these decisions for the most part to the professionals that are supposed to be making the decisions and not, you know, us to vote on. Like, I, I don't like voting on these things or when people say, oh, well, I didn't get this bill, can you take it off? And it comes before the council. That doesn't, that, that's not our place. But it is our place to make sure that the policies and the laws that we passed are fair. So I would like to certainly, I know personally that this constituent has done all the things that, that she should be doing and that they have a good record. So I'm, I'm, I am good with, with voting to, to vacate it, but I don't want to see this continue to happen, you know? Because the people who really know best, who are the good landlords, who are fixing properties up, are the people who work for the chief and that are in and out of people's houses all day. They're the ones who really know this.
So Kelly, we're gonna put it, we'll put it on the table? You want it?
I think for the, the sake of, yeah, going forward, I think yes. But I, I wouldn't want to see something like this show up again, I think, without any kind of real looking at the process and seeing what everybody that professionally does it every day thinks we should do.
But I also think, yeah, I just want to bring out.
And I know you said you were working on it, so.
And law does need to come and change, right?
I just want to bring out two things. Number one, city-owned property is different than privately-owned property. We, the reason we're, we have this in place in the first place is to cut down the amount of city-owned property. That's what happens to buildings that are not cared for or take, or occupied. They turn into city-owned properties. We're never gonna be in the business of fixing city-owned properties, ever. That's never gonna happen. But that's why they exist. They exist because vacant properties turn into city-owned properties. And the whole purpose of this ordinance in the first place was to prevent that from happening by requiring people who own vacant properties to get them fixed and renovated and occupied before they become city-owned properties. And yes, it is an imperfect science. It will never be perfect. But what we're trying to do is be consistent. And it's very hard to be consistent because every property and every property owner is different. And they each have, you know, some people are, are, some people have the information, you know, pay attention to the stuff that comes to them in the mail, and some people do not. And when we, we hear all kinds of different stories. But I don't want, I don't want anyone to think that there is not a process, because there is a process. That process being consistently applied has been a problem. But what we are going to do, and we are in the process of doing it now, is we are going to be reviewing every complaint, not every complaint, but the complaints that we receive. And we're going to be looking at the policy and we're going to be saying, how can we avoid this from happening? We're also gonna take a look at an appeals process so that it doesn't have to come in front of the council. But at the same time, it's not an easy task. Everybody has a different story, everybody has a different mindset, everybody has. But, but the reason we have this, the reason we have this is to prevent vacant properties from becoming uncared for and, and becoming city-owned properties and becoming light. That's the reason we have this. And it is working, it is working.
Okay.
I do think it's valuable, I, I certainly agree with you of that, but yeah, I just think the appeals process should be more internal.
It is.
Okay.
You don't see the majority of ones that were told, you don't see all the ones that were told no.
Yeah.
These are the first four to come to you guys in that last meeting, were the first four that ever made it to the common council. All the other ones have gone through an appeals process that was done internally, which still needs to be cleaned up.
Well, when it comes to, so when these four are coming to us, is this you saying, we believe, I believe, my group believes that this, this should be, you know, that we should vacate these fees? Or, or, or you see, that, that's a thing, you know, I, I want to do base somewhat?
In this case, I'm bringing it, I, I, you know, I brought it forward because I wanted to give the homeowner the opportunity to plead her case. And, and the one property was, was in a ward where her alderman is no longer here. And so, you know, it's, it's that kind of situation. But that's the only reason.
All right, thank you.
Oliver, just real quickly, you said that these properties are working to get back on the tax load. I wanted to correct you, these properties are current on taxes. This.
What about the ones we own?
No, no, I'm saying that her, her property that you voted, that, that, her on resolution, she's been paying property taxes.
I said that, I said that.
Oh, you said they were gonna get back on it?
No, I, I said they'll be back on their back book when they're fixed. If they don't fix them, guess what? We're gonna own them. That's what I said. Okay. Next, now, anyone else have? Mike, go right ahead. You want to discuss anything?
Thank you, Oliver, yeah, I'll be brief. We expect five corners demo to, contractor Jackson demolition to mobilize. I'm hopeful tomorrow, they said they were pretty confident that they would. If not, it'll be by the, the first next week. That is, start to finish probably a two-week project at most. It'll go quick and then that, that ISO of a structure will be cleaned out. One of them, let's see, Tri-State clearing, I know you, it, it, and again, it's a low-tech little project, but it's, it's huge for the city, our transmission line clearing for the water. I only mention this, even though it's in the town, you may or may not hear questions from folks along the way. Not everybody reads what comes to them. We have put out additional, an additional mailing yesterday to all the residents that either rejoined or had the, the right-of-way, the easement over, over their property. I expect the contractor will begin here by the end of the month, given the weather. And they are moving in now to start that. If there's any questions, if folks come to you, just please direct them to either my office or to Randy Gardner. Road program is wrapped up for this year, punch list is done. Again, I ask you, because I need to get this project rolling earlier, again, this coming year, based on the amount of funding and the size of that project that we expect to do next year. Don't hesitate to start giving me your list of streets now. The sooner the better. I really like to have that, this project out on the street and advertised, no later than the beginning of March and, and awarded in April, which means I need to do the legwork sooner than later this winter. So any and all input is welcome. And in the interest of time, I'll take any questions that your folks have.
Anybody got any questions for the engineer?
Hey, I'm ready to stand for a pleasure, we call the meeting to work. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Before you sit down, I would like to ask the council, and for a moment of silence, for our departed employee, Ernie Pilbasa, passed away this weekend. He was a 30-year employee of our Department of Public Works. And he had a lot of friends and a lot of coworkers are gonna miss him. And we pay tribute during any time with a moment of silence. Thank you very much.
Alderwoman Quist, tomorrow.
Here.
Alderwoman Deek, tomorrow.
Here.
Alderwoman Collins. Alderwoman Morcello.
Here. I make the, make the motions, I've got the agenda with two consent resolutions.
Alderwoman Morcello.
Hi.
Alderwoman Quist, tomorrow.
Aye.
Alderwoman Deek, tomorrow.
Aye.
Okay, who's next? My papers, I have papers, just move.
We have no proclamations this evening and no communications or presentations. At this time, anyone from the public would like to speak? You have, just come up to the podium, state your name and address, you have five minutes to talk. No one?
I don't know if I should, in this regard, that we just talk about those vacant.
No, just say thank you.
Just say thank you, okay?
Okay. So we have no public participation, but you can go on to the controller's report?
I didn't really, I'm hesitant to prepare or to tell you.
Anything to talk about with the controller? Anything to talk about with the controller? Any questions for the controller at this point in time? Okay. Going to be a quick meeting. Old business, who's going to start with old business? There are two resolutions.
Resolution 2324-97, resolution waiving vacant building fees due pursuant to Amsterdam City Code, Chapter 226, for 256 Guy Park Avenue by Mayor Sinquanti.
So moved.
Alderman Maricello?
Aye.
Alderman Christomars?
Aye.
Alderman D. Gamula?
Aye.
Resolution 2324-98, resolution waiving vacant building fees due pursuant to Amsterdam City Code, Chapter 226, from 100 to 102 Brookside Avenue by Mayor Sinquanti.
So moved.
Alderman Maricello?
Aye.
Alderman Christomars?
Aye.
Alderman D. Gamula?
Aye.
Okay, onto new business.
Resolution 2324-102, resolution adopting minutes of the last common council meeting by Alderman Maricello.
So moved.
Alderman Maricello?
Aye.
Alderman Christomars?
Aye.
Alderman D. Gamula?
Aye.
Resolution 2324-103, resolution transferring funds for solar panel contract termination by Alderman Maricello.
So moved.
Alderman Maricello?
Aye.
Alderman Christomars?
Aye.
Alderman D. Gamula?
Aye.
Resolution 2324-104, resolution transferring funds for sewer plant equipment by Alderman Christomars. Whereas sewer plant equipment costs have been higher than anticipated this year. Whereas many items of equipment have been in service between 15 to 25 years and need to replace and/or repair. Older equipment represents ongoing budgetary challenges. Resolve, the controllers authorize the transfer of funds from the 2324 fiscal year budget as follows. Decrease expense sewer contingency $15,000 to sewer equipment in same amount.
So moved.
Alderman Christomars?
Aye.
Alderman D. Gamula?
Aye.
And Alderman Maricello?
Aye.
Resolution 2324-105, resolution authorizing contract with the Remy Group LLC by Alderman Christomars. Whereas the city currently engages services from two different third-party companies to provide support for the printers and copiers at City Hall. With regards to the contracts currently in place, the contract with one provider ends May 2024. And the other contract is subject to cancellation upon 30 days' notice. Whereas it has been recommended by the city controller that the city engage the Remy Group LLC in the consolidation of the services being provided by two different companies and with the transfer providing an overall financial savings to the city.
So moved.
Alderman Christomars?
Aye.
Alderman D. Gamula?
Aye.
Alderman Maricello?
Aye.
Resolution 2324-106, resolution approving the audit by Alderman Maricello.
So moved.
Alderman Maricello?
Aye.
Alderman Christomars?
Aye.
Alderman D. Gamula?
Aye.
On the consent resolution?
Yes, resolution 2324-107, consent resolution authorizing city to engage Shepherd Communications and Security for the purchase and installation of security cameras by Mayor Sinquanti.
Kelly, I want to sponsor that.
Okay.
Whereas the city of Amsterdam is desirous to install security cameras at Shuttleworth Park, Veterans Park, and Mechanics Building. And whereas, after having solicited proposals from three different vendors, the city controller having recommended that the city engage Shepherd Communications and Security. Whereas, the proposal anticipates cost to the city in the approximate amount of $27,767.04 for Shuttleworth Park, $18,990.85 for Veterans Park, and $6,477.35 for Mechanics Building.
The area residence should be sponsored by Alderman Christomars.
Okay, and whereas, with regard to payment of the same, it's a settlement Angelo Santa Barbara has sought a disbursement from the state and municipality allotment in the amount of $55,000, which if granted, will be applied towards the cost of this project. In any event, that the disbursement request is denied and/or does not fully absorb the cost of said project, the balance of the project being paid from arper fund awards previously granted to the city, it is hereby resolved that the engagement of Shepherd Communications and the security is hereby authorized.
So moved.
Alderman Christomars?
Aye.
Alderman D. Gamula?
Aye.
Alderman Maricello?
Aye.
Resolution 2324-108, consent resolution to de-obligate the balance of unused loan funds by Alderman D. Gamula. Whereas, the city has been approved for a low-interest USDA loan to refinance a portion of the cost of the new fire truck that was previously paid for with van proceeds. And whereas, the loan was approved for $1.466 million, but only $1.415 million is being borrowed. Resolve, the common council hereby resolves that the USDA rule development de-obligate the balance of the unused funds in the amount of $51,000 for the purchase of the latter fire truck.
Home loan.
Alderman D. Gamula?[1711.02]